I'm gonna call the meeting to order at 6:35. If there's an approval of the agenda. There were no issues, I was gonna bring it up to... The first thing is the reorganization. The annual reorganization of the board. And accept nominations for the chairman.
Are you waiting for a motion? Do we have to approve?
Yeah, you have to approve.
The approval of the agenda?
I can say that, I am... Okay, does someone have a...
Approved. I'll make a motion. Put it that way. Second.
I would like a discussion.
Yeah, I need a discussion.
Okay. Open it up to discussion.
Well, if you look at...
One, Susan? Go ahead.
It says approval of the agenda. As of the last meeting we had, it said that we would be adding on to the agenda at the next meeting, um, old business. And old business is not, not on this agenda.
Clearly not on. Okay, any other discussion on this? Bob?
Yeah, I, I asked at a previous meeting to have a line item on there so the Board of Supervisors could make questions or comments. And I see that's still not on there. You need to have a line item on there for when we have questions or comments.
Okay. At the time we're making the agenda, there was no old business that, that I was aware of.
There's always old business. So don't sit down and say it's not on no business. There's always old business to talk about.
It doesn't hurt to put it on the agenda, Mark.
All right, let's, let's take, um...
You told me last time it was gonna be on this one.
I did.
And it's not.
It's on page fifteen of twenty-six for minutes of procedures. It's listed as old business is on it.
Let's take a vote of what we're gonna do. Those that say approve the agenda as it is. Let's, let's do a roll call vote for what it is.
The, the motion was to approve. The motion was...
Wait, I don't understand, is Mark making a motion?
No, Chet made a motion.
There's no pressure at the moment.
So, Chet, your motion, to be clear, was to approve the minutes as noted.
As written right here, right.
Okay.
And now we're gonna take a roll count vote on that to see where we go. So, would you go ahead with the roll count, Greg? Greg?
Sure. You need him?
So the vice chair is saying yes, we don't need old business on it.
I am saying, I am saying yes to approving this meeting's minutes.
Agenda.
Agenda, excuse me.
Agenda.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So you're okay with not having old business talked about?
I am saying yes to this agenda.
Which means you're saying no to putting old business on it.
A rule of order here.
I gotta say, can we keep going on?
We need to go through the vote, there's no more debate.
Robert Spalding?
Nate?
David Potter? Tim Carter?
No.
Jay Hickory?
He's, he's yes, he said, he raised his hand, said yes.
Yes.
Look.
Nick? No.
Clint, Willie? Clint, quit? Clinton?
Oh, he's just clicking on, he's trying to get on. He's gotta unmute himself, right?
No.
Is that no?
No.
Okay. Uh, Nancy Goodrow? Bill Gillum?
Yes.
Ethan Peppin?
No.
Chet Brown?
Yes.
And Don Prouse?
Where are you? Does he know I unmuted himself?
Yeah, I can say it's his first time on, so...
Don, can you unmute yourself?
There you go, there you go, he's on.
Oh, victory.
Nope.
No, he's good.
There you go. There you go.
Connection might not be very good, maybe.
Call his name again.
Don? Don, can, can you hear us?
There's a little hand raise button, isn't there somewhere?
Do you have a phone that you can call him on to see if he's there?
He's not on the list yet.
Wells?
Wells?
Yes.
He just got on, this is his first meeting.
Oh, he must've just gotten on.
He just got on from Wells.
Because we didn't have anybody from Wells.
Yeah, Wells has not even on this list. Do I, do I have to?
Well, that is...
That's the attendance from last week.
That's last, that's last month. So he wasn't there last month.
Yeah, but the town should still be there.
Hey, Don, can you hear us? We're at the meeting.
He doesn't miss the towns that don't have representatives. We have towns that don't have representatives. Oh, yeah, you're right.
They, they weren't here.
Oh, you're right, you're right. No, there's no representative for that.
Okay.
I am, you're right.
Well, you can be right, yeah.
Okay, so are you gonna be out?
Oh, chair. Head of the table.
Oh, you're in.
Or you can take my chair.
Thank you, thank you.
Would you like to take my chair, too?
Okay, see. Okay, okay, thanks. Um, I'll, I'll just say that you're... Okay. He's having some technical issues. Oops, Don. And he's having some technical issues and he's can't, he's gone here.
Geez, did he give his vote before he dropped off?
Uh, he gave us the phone here, so maybe I can just put him on speakerphone.
Yeah, go say it.
Hey, Don, I got you on speakerphone? So you, you can participate that way if you like.
Yeah, however.
Okay. So there's a vote on the table to approve the agenda as it is.
Okay, uh, I probably shouldn't be allowed to vote because I don't know what the previous meeting happened.
Okay.
Read the agenda and it looks fine.
Okay. So he's abstaining?
Well, we're not voting on the minutes, are we? This is, this is just for the agenda.
Just the agenda.
He said he doesn't know what happened at the last meeting.
We're looking at the agenda.
So he doesn't feel like he should vote.
Tonight's meeting said the...
Well, I understand what you're looking at, but I guess it looks fine. I, that's the first time I've ever been to one of your meetings.
Yep.
And it looks fine to me. Want me to say in favor? In favor?
No, I want you to say not in favor.
We're trying to do the vote here.
Well, he just asked that question.
He was one person. Who, who just came in? Uh, Rick?
You're in.
The motion on the table is, um, to approve the agenda as, as written.
We have to add a couple places, just so you know.
And they want...
Old business.
Right.
On our town meeting agenda, we have old business. On our fire meeting agenda, we have old business.
Yeah.
That's the case. There's something you didn't complete last meeting that you're gonna maybe attend to at this meeting. So it's old business. Or if you were gonna buy something and you bought it, you could say it was completed. It's just a form of record keeping, I guess.
True.
That just makes sense. Just about every agenda I see now always has an old business on it. Old business, new business.
To clarify...
Rick, what's your, what's your... So you're saying that you would not like to approve this without the old business?
Um, that's just this meeting.
It's this meeting.
That's not the future meetings.
That's right.
That's just this meeting.
Approve this agenda for today. But add, I make the motion, we add old business.
We'll, we'll have to do that once we adopt these.
We can do that later.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's just adding
Yeah.
old business.
It was supposed to have been on this one, but they didn't put it on this.
You see, here's the minutes from last month and it says we were going to add it, but they didn't. So you can say that, but that doesn't mean it'll be on next month because we did that last month and they didn't listen.
It's in your agenda to adopt the rules, so you will be doing that for the next meeting. This is an organizational meeting.
So can you do a, a count? That's not one person, one person, but add up the yeses and the others.
Right.
Currently it's seven yes, five no. No, total points.
Oh, points, yes.
Yes, heavy weight.
Yeah, because Robin City gets more points.
I think it must be about negative one.
Yeah, hovering.
I also have to second the rule. You have a comment or question on it. Hundred fifty points, yes, thirty-eight points, no.
One fifty-eight, thirty-eight. The A's, to approve the agenda pass. Next item on the agenda is to accept nominations for the chair.
I nominate Billy.
You can second it.
How do I say no?
You can say that during discussion.
All right. We have a nomination, we have a second which is not required. Um, let's, let's... All those that say yes, say yes.
Well, you can take other nominations, you know.
Yeah, you could have any.
Oh, sorry, are there any other ones?
Oh, I, I would love to nominate Tim Carter, but I don't know if he'd accept it. I mean, he's a man that has all the experience that we need. He's, he's retired from the job that he had where he was in charge of trucks, machinery, people. He knows composting, he knows farming, he knows recycling, he knows metal. Um, he knows how to do everything that has to do with Rockland County solid waste. So he would actually be the perfect person to be chairperson. And I know that Bill has been doing this for a while and he has a lot on his plate because he told me he works at least sixty hours a week. So I can understand why. And when I ask, how come we have such short meetings? He says, people don't have time for this, you know, I work a lot. So I can see where, uh, Tim Carter would be an excellent choice for chairperson.
Are you nominating him then?
Sure.
Now, now we gotta get a second? Anybody second it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mark just said, well, you don't have to have a second though, so...
Well, oh, okay. We all, the ones I all, we all said seconds, but...
Well, we always had old business on the report, too, but that's...
Well, we didn't in our town, but, so...
Any other nominations? For chairman? All right, let's, uh, let's take a vote, one by one.
We need a motion to close the nominations.
Yeah.
Let's have a...
Motion to close.
Close. Okay. At this time, let's vote to nominate Bill Gillum as chairman. And, uh, I'll take a, a yes from everyone, or if it's a split vote, we'll, obviously, let's do a split vote right now. Let's do a show of hands, I guess, to do a roll call.
Roll call, you're gonna have to...
Should I go down and roll call?
Yeah.
They said either Bill or Tim.
Yeah, that's, that's how you should do it.
Yeah.
Gabe McGeehan?
Bill.
Robert Spalding? Dave Potter?
Uh, Bill.
Rick Robowski?
Billy.
Uh, Tim Carter, uh, does he abstain or not?
He can vote.
Okay, Tim?
I decided to vote for myself, ain't I?
You can abstain.
Jay Hickory?
Billy.
Yeah, he's seen the cap, but he used to get out of the vehicle.
He's in that.
He has, um, the same...
Clinton, you have some, Clinton, you have some, uh, interference.
There you go.
All right.
Clint, what's your vote?
Not when you want him.
He's muted.
Sorry. Clint, Bill or Tim?
Bill.
Thank you. Uh, Nancy? Bill Gillum?
I can't vote for myself.
You can. You can if you want.
You can if you want.
Tim didn't, am I going?
Yes, he did.
Oh, he did, okay. I'll vote for myself then.
Okay. Ethan?
Uh, Bill.
Chet?
Bill.
And Don?
Don?
He's on the phone, ain't he? Oh, he's not on the phone.
Oh, he got off.
You can see his pocket or his ear.
Yeah, you can see him. Just tell me you put his hand up.
Yeah, there he is.
Oh, there he is.
He's disconnected. Hey, we were taking, which would you like for chairman for the board? Would be Bill Gillum or Tim Carter?
I wouldn't know either one of them if they dropped in front of me.
He's really bad.
I just assume abstaining because I just, I don't know really what's going on. I'm coming into this, uh, in the middle of a...
That's fair.
It's fair, yeah, until he gets to know people.
All right. Thanks, Don.
From what I can gather, Bill is way ahead of the other guy.
Yes.
Yeah.
He's older.
Yeah. We're talking about each other.
That's true.
Well, I don't know if you are or not, Bill.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, that was, that was clear, so that, that's okay.
We're waiting for the final score.
We gotta do points.
We're in a weighted program. It's not a clear.
prevail there. Uh, the vote tallies are one eighty-nine for Bill, forty-nine for Tim.
Okay, um, charter code is Bill Gillum as chairman, and I hand this meeting over to you, Bill.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, the first, uh, number three, uh, approval of minutes of...
No, we gotta do the rest of the board.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Nominations for vice chair is open.
I nominate Gabe.
Any other nominations? I'll take a motion and close the nominations.
Motion. Second? Or I can't second. You can.
I'll second it.
So the nomination's closed. So there's only one person, so obviously we don't need to take a vote, am I correct?
Right.
So we don't have a secretary, and you're normally a secretary casts the, the vote.
The one vote, yeah.
Yeah. But we don't have a secretary.
We have a clerk.
Somebody should have cast it.
Someone should cast it.
We have a treasurer and a clerk.
Well, then I will cast the vote, one vote. To accept, um, Gabe from, to be vice chair. Okay? Three E-board members? So the other two are?
No, no, I'm sorry.
You and Gabe are on.
Or automatic, right, okay. So I need three others.
Three more.
Okay, I need, the floor is open for nominations for the E-board, and I need three.
I nominate Ethan.
Okay, any other nominations?
I nominate Nancy.
Any other nominations?
Robert Spalding.
Okay, any other nominations?
Do you wanna go on?
Yeah.
I not, I nominate, uh, Chet.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have four people.
We have four people so far. Nominations are still open. Any other nominations? If not, a motion to close the nominations in order?
Motion to close.
Okay. So how do you want to... There we go. So how do you want to take this vote?
Let's pick three.
We have to pick three.
Or just pick the one you don't want, to be simpler. Be simpler, but can we do that?
I don't know. Let's pick, pick the three that we, each one pick three that you do want.
Or do you wanna do a paper?
Why don't you just call each sort of chairman?
Yeah, we can raise, raise your hand, yeah.
Each name?
Each name?
Yeah, okay. So the first one was... Who was the first one?
Ethan.
Ethan. All in favor of you, raise your hand. Jay, you can just raise your hand if you want, Ethan or not. Okay? Anybody else? Quentin? Yep, okay, Quentin's got his hand up. Did you count those?
Oh, yeah. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
And there was...
Three on there.
Three on there. Well, their hands went down, but...
So nine, I guess?
Yeah.
Okay. And so who was the second one?
Nancy, was it Nancy?
Nancy.
Nancy's Nancy.
Nancy from...
Pittsburgh.
Yep. All in favor of Nancy, raise your hand.
Can't vote.
Yeah, you can, you can vote for yourself if you want.
You can go for yourself.
Yep.
I've got seven here, eight, uh, nine.
There's three on the screen, okay?
This was Oscar, I mean, that, you could vote for yourself.
Yep. And... Did you get all those votes?
I, I counted nine.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, and the, um, third one was?
Chet.
Did we, or?
Oh, Chet, okay. All in favor of Chet?
Nine again. Okay. If Clinton, Clinton, you vote.
You're voting? Oh, there's a hand up, okay. And then Robert's the last one, am I correct?
Right.
Robert.
All in favor of Robert?
I count two.
Two so far. Yeah.
Okay, so that's pretty clear. Jason, Nancy, and Chet, congratulations. And condolence isn't the same time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, the third item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of three twelve twenty-five. Any deletions, corrections?
Well, I have a couple of questions.
Deletions or additions?
Addition.
Okay. The addition is what?
Under, um, number five, district managers report on the Vermont DUC stormwater visit. I would like to add in there that we have, um, our metal pile with the contamination from it being laying on the ground when we have stormwater. We were talking about that at the last meeting. So I would like to add that we need to fix our metal pile to prevent contamination from stormwater discharge.
So you're looking for proposals?
I'm looking to add that in there.
Mr. Chairman, port of order. It wasn't suggested or indicated or uttered that the metal's gonna cause contamination. It was discussed that it would be considered that it may be required. That's what the conversation was.
So that was the state's suggestion?
It, it's a, it's a something that they're looking at, and as time goes by, they're look, they're just looking at all the items that may be considered requiring a permit. At this time, it wasn't indicated that this is gonna happen. They're looking into this, and, um, it could be considered is to have a permit that, um, would allow it to happen.
What do you mean have a permit that would allow it to happen, too? You mean get a permit that allows us to contaminate stormwater?
This, who's saying that's contaminating?
I'm asking a question, I don't understand your answer.
Mr. Chairman, in no ways is people saying, or anyone that said that this is gonna contaminate stormwater.
That was brought up.
It was suggested that if this were to exist, we would need to get a permit.
That is not what you said last meeting. And why would you even do it? Why don't you just clean the mess up?
Wait, 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 one at a time here. Let, let him finish and then you can speak.
Question about, okay, what we've been trying to do is to, to, as you, is what was said, is to clean it up in a process that's been going on for, um, a few months. And this is the goal that we're looking to do this year. Is to put it into forty-yard containers and have it processed so we can get some extra revenue on there. We need to do a few more things to do, um, to get this thing going. There's some things that are being dealt with attorneys, contracts. We gotta, we gotta work on that. So in the meantime, it is in the plan, and I'm anticipating that we're gonna have a solution before the time the state requires us to do this application. This is gonna happen in the next few months.
Bill, may I come? This could be done, this could have already been done. We could have this done within a day or two. We could have two forty-yard rollouts up there. We were offered two of them. We were offered the pilot program through Earth Waste. I know that our contract is gonna be ending with Earth Waste, and when it ends, we can go to what the E-board had voted for, to go to the Pittsburgh, you know, metal company. But in the meantime, we could be fixing this right now. We don't need to wait. And the word contamination was brought up at the last meeting. And we talked about it. And so there's absolutely...
So can I make a suggestion that you send?
No, can you let her finish, please?
I thought she was finished.
She was not, she was still talking.
You're out of order, you didn't raise your hand up. Let, let me finish.
You didn't raise your hand either. My God.
Well, I would really like to add on...
Well, I'm getting to, you need to do a motion to move this one way or another, so we can vote on it.
So I have to make a motion to add it to the minutes?
Send this to the, to send, no, send this to the executive committee for them to come up with proposals with the director and come back to it.
I don't think we need to go to the executive committee. It's common sense. You just, all, all our district manager has to do is call Earth Waste and tell them we're gonna take a minor proposal.
You're either gonna amend, you're either gonna amend this or you need to do a motion. Those are your two avenues.
Okay, well, you just told me how to make a motion. I told you I wanted to amend this and put the word contamination in there from the metal pile because that's what we talked about last week. Because once that's documented, then we can talk about a motion after that.
Question?
Mr. Manager, this is, this item that is, we're discussing right now.
Stormwater right now.
The stormwater visit on two twenty, twenty, twenty-five. The Vermont inspectors came, they visited. What was their report on the, was there any report of contamination?
No.
Why was that word mentioned then? Mr. Chair Pearson, can I ask a question? Brianna, you went to school. You have an incredible resume. You went for environmental science, did you not?
Point of order.
Is there always a chance of contamination?
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
I'm asking a question.
Well, I'm calling it as a point of order. I don't, I don't know that, I don't know where you're going with this. It seems like you're interrogating some.
Contamination was brought up and we have metals on the ground.
It was brought up in a discussion afterwards and this is talking about the report that was, the state visited on that date. So Mr. Chairman reported on that and this is, this is a note about that report and he just said that there was no contamination reported from the state
What does it say that there was no contamination? How come they said it at the last meeting? You even didn't hear it because I brought it up at the last meeting. You thought I was talking about something else.
I, I didn't, I did not hear where the contamination conversation came from.
And we, and we let you know.
But I just clarified with the chair, with, with Mr. Shea that this discussion point right here is about that visit. He is reporting on that visit.
Right.
And in that visit, there was no contamination reported or mentioned. So whatever was discussed about the contamination was a discussion that the board had internally, which is not.
What do you mean internally? What do you mean by that?
In this meeting, in the board meeting.
We talked about that.
Why is this such a contentious thing? It's, it's a point of fact.
Because the district manager brought it up. And unfortunately, somebody's not having the TV here anymore. So you have no documentation of that.
Yes, we do. It's being recorded. It is being recorded by state laws being recorded.
Well, then let's look into that too, I guess.
Last meeting was recorded and was also handed over to peg TV.
We have to look into the recording of that last meeting to find out about the contamination.
Oh, yeah. Can I mention something?
Yes.
I take my own notes during these meetings, during the meeting, you know, just to help me remember things. And I think I would have heard, I don't remember hearing anything about contamination. I was looking through my notes just now and I don't see anything there either. So I'm not persuaded that there, that was brought up as contamination. It's basically what we just said. Scrap metal pile needs to be cleaned up and processed and put into forty yarders. That's what I have down.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. That's a very good.
That just needs to be cleaned up and put in forty yarders. An M S G P multi-sector general permit, we may need to have an application for stormwater discharge. But it didn't, I don't remember the word contamination. I didn't write it down. So I just wanted to say that was my memory as to what happened last month. Okay?
Okay, well, I like your answer. Two forty-yard roll-offs. Which could be done instantly, as you know, Nancy, because you were the one that brought it up in September, that the Earth Waste was offering us.
Point of order, we are discussing the minutes from last week. We are not discussing other things. Is this statement correct? That is what we are discussing.
Right.
I'm not saying yes or no to anything else we're talking about. I'm saying let's stay focused on the, on what the discussion was. We are veering off of that.
Point of order is taken.
So I wanted to make an amendment that we add that we need to use two forty-yard containers to prevent contamination. That's my amendment to that.
I have a quick amendment as well. Clint Wally, I'm not familiar with who this is. It's Clint Woolley.
Type of.
Oh, yeah. Correction noted.
So now we need a motion to accept either as written or as amended.
What's the statement again?
Add on that we need to put in two forty-yard roll-offs to prevent contamination.
Can I correct that actually? Need to add two forty-yard roll-offs to clean up and process. The word contamination distorts. Makes, it's, yeah, assuming something that may not be true.
And was it that we needed to or was it that it was discussed?
It was discussed and that was.
It was discussed, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah. I don't believe it was said anywhere that it was needed to have that. It was, it was discussed as an internal option.
Yeah, it's a desired outcome.
It's, it's not a discussion about why you would or wouldn't. We are simply recording that it was discussed. Not that we're clarifying the wording because it can be distorting to the conversation to imply certain things because at nowhere was it required or.
So they didn't say.
May I, may I finish my statement, please?
Yes.
Thank you very much. The, the statement has to be clear and accurate. Whereas it wasn't recommended by the state, it wasn't required by the state, it wasn't insisted upon by the state. Our discussion of this item accurately included the discussion of potentially bringing
Some roll-offs.
Some roll-offs in there to clean up the mess. That's an internal function of us. There is no requirement to do that. There wasn't a mandate for that to happen. What we need to record in this, if, to your point, is that we, in addition to this note, we also discussed the options of roll-off containers.
Some proposal for roll-offs.
So do you? Do we vote on the, there's, there's two. Either Ms. Phoenix is going to keep the wording that she stated the same.
Or change.
Or change the wording to what Nancy and I have contributed back to her. And then we will all vote on whether or not we, we approve that being added in whatever wording she has chosen. And also whether it goes along with that same vote, the, the spelling correction of Clint's last name. I believe they are separate items and should be voted upon separately because one may not support the other.
I'm more than happy to amend it to what Nancy said.
Okay.
Did she reread what she said so we know where we're voting on? Maybe that'd be helpful.
Nancy, could you give us what you just read to us?
Uh, let's see, to, um, to put the scrap metal in two forty yarders and to clean it up and to process it. The scrap metal pile specifically. I guess that's kind of messy, but. Hard to use.
Okay. Any other debate? All in favor to say aye.
Aye.
As amended. And then the other one is, I don't think we really need the motion, but you're just saying we got a spelling error.
Yeah, that's a distraction.
Okay. As noted, spelling of the last name will be corrected in the minutes. Anything else? Any more deletions or additions to the minutes of the last meeting?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
May I ask you a question? With this Vermont D E C stormwater visit that happened on February twentieth, because we're all, we all seem to be on different pages with it, I think it would be great if we could see the report that the state did because on page fifteen in the charter, it says that all records, books, and accounts of the district shall at all times be opened to inspection by persons interested. So as a board of supervisors, I think it would be a good idea for all of us to see what the state had to say and then we would all be on the same page.
Send a report.
The state didn't leave us a report?
No.
Okay. State didn't leave us a report.
So there's no records of anything?
There's a record in the minutes.
So there's no records of the state. If I call the state D E C, they're not going to have any record of coming to the Rutland Transfer Station and writing a report?
There's no report.
They have nothing at all written?
They probably haven't filed one with us yet.
Yet.
I don't know if they are.
Okay.
They might not never file one.
Okay, well, I'll call them to find out. Thank you.
Okay. Did we vote on that? Yes, we did.
We, we voted on the, on the amendment.
Okay.
But did that also approve the minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
Yes.
Could I make a comment on that? By doing so, by putting the solid waste in a forty-yard dumpster, that would also reduce chances of an accident. So that would kind of put us in better standing with OSHA. I mean, we should be looking at every opportunity we have to get rid of somebody getting hurt, killed, whatever.
I don't think anybody is not in agreement with that.
That's a great suggestion.
Clean it up looks better. Takes away a lot of chances for somebody to get hurt.
Okay. Item four, I take it everybody's done it except for the city, am I correct?
Couple of other ones.
We're now on the appointment forms?
Yeah, just a few towns.
A appointment from your town.
Who, who hasn't done it, Mark? So we all know.
The city.
Killington?
He said there's a couple more towns.
No, I haven't done it. Killington, Mount Holly.
So Killington, get on it.
Pittsford.
Ira, send it in.
The city. And Wolfen have not.
City has a process, so we're in the middle of that.
Those are the ones I don't have.
All right, so we need to have those. All right, item five, conflict of interest policy, ethic, ethic conduct policy, rules of procedures for the meeting, and executive board policy. And that all starts page six. So let's take the first one first here, and that is the conflict of interest and ethical conduct policy. Okay, Mark?
This is something that the board recently looked at in detail over a couple of months at least. And it's been recently adopted and there's no need that I see for an update.
Mr. Dylan, may I speak?
Yeah, just a minute. You need an update?
No, there's no update.
There's no update.
This is the latest that was just passed.
So we're not adopting anything here?
Last two months ago.
We passed it already.
It's just for reorganization needs.
Okay, question?
Well, it says at the bottom of the page that it was adopted on February fifth, two thousand twenty-five. And I found a piece of paper in my paperwork that said that we had it on January eighth, two thousand twenty-five. So did we adopt this in January or did we adopt this in February? Well, we'll just look into that to figure out the right thing.
Either way, it got accepted either in January or February, we accepted it, so.
Okay, so it doesn't matter. There we go.
Okay. So we're okay on that one. So the next one is the rules of procedure of the meeting. There are some changes there. On page twenty-six, excuse me, page thirteen. Twelve and thirteen.
Stats on twelve.
Starts on twelve, goes to thirteen.
On item number, page thirteen, on the bottom of it, item one, organization A.
Where are they?
On page thirteen.
Thirteen of twenty-six?
Yes.
And we're on thirteen.
The bottom, the bottom of the page says two of eleven. And the top of the page says, says thirteen of twenty-six.
So the numbers that we're going by is on the top of the page.
Thank you.
So what are we looking at at page thirteen of twenty-six?
What I'm, what I'm looking at is if you look at the charter, the charter calls for a weighted vote to declare a quorum on a meeting. And we need to add the words weighted.
What number are you at?
A at the bottom.
A on the bottom.
A, a major of the total weighted membership?
Yep. Majority of the total weighted membership of the body is a quorum. If the weighted quorum of the members is not present, the meeting shall not take place.
What do you mean by weighted?
Well, we just voted.
The numbers?
The numbers.
So because Rutland City gets more numbers, so you need to have?
No, this is by the charter.
By the, yeah.
And the charter is based on population of the.
Right.
It's registered voters.
Right. That's why Rutland gets more, more numbers. So does that affect the fact that the Rutland City representatives must be there? Is that what that means by weighted?
No.
No, okay.
Yeah, they, they have to be present, Dave.
Present for what?
To be counted.
For the meeting to be counted.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I thought you just said no to her.
I did. I must not have understood her question.
Okay.
So because, because your question didn't align with, with this statement, this statement is saying that it, it will be counted by weighted, which doesn't matter whose town, you're just weighted by your weighted. So I guess I misunderstood why you were referring to Rutland.
Ethan has to be here. Otherwise, it's part of the city weight doesn't count. He has to be here.
Right, because he has numbers.
You just need a simple majority of weighted votes, which may or may not include Rutland City.
That's true. That's true.
Oh, your question is because Rutland City has multiple?
They get more numbers than like Mendon, Ira.
Technically, we're missing a member. We're supposed to have three.
Yeah, I know. You've been missing a member for a while.
For a long time.
Oh, it's the mayor.
It's the mayor.
So the mayor appoints somebody, doesn't he?
Yes, he does.
Mayor or the mayor's designee is the language.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would like a copy of that weighted vote sometime, Mark. I think I've asked for that before too. I would like a copy of that to go right down and see who has what. If I can get that to you.
Can we, can we, for the next meeting, print one out and put it in the packet?
And so was your question, I, I don't, I, I may not understand this either.
I know.
So for, for each town, Brandon, I'll use myself so as not to ostracize anyone else. I have so many votes and there's only one member from, from Brandon.
But you got a weighted.
I believe what my colleague was referring to was a town such as Rutland, which would have multiple, which has multiple members. Are, are their numbers broken out or are their numbers as a, as a whole? So if only one of those members is present and voting, they carry the whole weight of that town?
Don't know. I haven't got the answer to that.
Is that the question you were asking?
No, because I think they each hold a certain amount of numbers. I don't think if one person shows up, they get all the numbers. Because if there were three Rutland City people, they would have high, high numbers.
Each has thirty-eight.
Each has thirty-eight votes.
Each person has thirty.
Thirty-eight.
What's, how many does Brandon have?
Brandon has thirty.
So I would have, what, thirty?
You've got twenty.
Twenty, okay. So does it go by population?
Ethan explained that very well. No, it's per registered voter.
Yes.
And it's one per one hundred registered voters in your town.
Rounded down.
Is that, that's, did I summarize that correctly?
But it is a point I, from reading, I did read the charter and it's not strictly clear to me that Rutland City's votes are divided in equal thirds. That was my interpretation, but I'm not sure if the language, it, there might be ambiguity there. So it might be worth checking that.
Currently, we are practicing as if it is thirty-eight. It's broken up even. That's how we're practicing right now.
Yes. I have seventy-six votes.
What does the city have?
Three sets of thirty-eight.
Three sets of thirty-eight.
But only two members are.
But we only have two members here.
So technically.
Three sets of thirty-eight, so that's roughly a hundred and twenty votes.
If they add a third member.
They have a hundred and twenty thousand people around the city?
No.
No.
Numbers aren't a number. You're saying that one vote is a hundred people?
It's, there's about twelve thousand registered voters just under that. So breaks into four thousand divided by a hundred is around forty, thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
We will put that in the packet for the next meeting so everyone knows what's going on. Because he uses that as a quorum call for, for his sheet. So I have no problem with that. All right.
Can I bring up something else?
Let's, let's get through the changes first and we'll go through all the questions.
Oh, okay.
All right. On page sixteen of twenty-eight, number two, special budget hearings. Meetings.
Yeah?
That's to insert the words budget hearing into this meeting, which is the meeting that we have to have a budget hearing before the board's approval or consideration on the first meeting in January. This calls for announcements in the newspaper, a little bit more advertising to get the word up that this is going to be a hearing.
And we have to send to each town clerk the budget to the town clerks.
And the change here, Mr. Manager, is, is just a wording change to clarify the title of that meeting. Everything else is.
That's correct.
The same.
So that doesn't really need the word special in it. It only needs the word budget hearing meeting because a special meeting is different than a regular meeting.
Well, that means we already have budget meetings, hearings before that. So that's our special one that we have to have before the election, before you vote.
Yeah, this is a.
That separates it from the, we have like four or five before we get budget votes, budget hearings.
Well, I just don't, I don't want to confuse it with what's in the charter. Because in the charter under special meetings, it says special meetings of the board of supervisors may be called at any time by the chairman or shall be called by the clerk upon written request of a majority of the members of the board, except in case of emergency. Each member of the board shall be given at least twenty-four hour notice. Each member of the board shall be given twenty-four hour notice. So I think there's regular meetings, special meetings, and then a special budget hearing meeting.
Perhaps.
So there should be another line.
Actually, actually, number seven under agendas talks about that.
That's on page?
Uh, page fourteen of twenty-six.
Page fourteen of twenty-six?
Regular and special meetings. And then you got a budget hearing, which is a public, which is a public hearing.
So we're not going to blend them together?
No.
Okay.
So regular is the regularly scheduled meeting.
Yeah, or a special.
Then there's a special meeting.
Right.
And then there's special budget meeting.
That's all that hails that night is the budget. We don't talk about.
We don't talk about anything else and it's an open meeting to the public.
That's the very last meeting of the.
Even though we call our E-Board meetings sometimes special meetings. So those are special meetings with the E-Board.
But in reality, that would, the word special there is probably just used. It's not used the same. It's probably, that's just an E-Board meeting and we just, we just semantically use the.
Even though it is a special meeting because it's an E-Board meeting.
Every meeting is special.
According to the open meeting law, if it's not, and we, we go back, at the end of last year, we announced when our E-Board meetings were going to be throughout the whole year. Those are regular meetings. Anything else that happens other than that would be a special meeting. That explains that.
Oh, we post our monthly meetings with the town clerks and everybody else. Okay? And then we do a special meeting, then there's another procedure for that.
And those procedures are spelled out in item seven under agenda.
Yep. Okay. Anything else?
Twenty-three, we got one more thing. On page twenty-three, on twenty-three of twenty-six, we changed it to three board members and, well, five board members on E-Board instead of, before we only had it for four. So now it's got three.
Oh, here it is.
Yeah, three additional board members plus the vice and the chair.
Right, so that's a total of five.
And if I understand historically correctly, we had been practicing at a five-member board, but it had been written here as a two-member board. So now we have, I'm sorry, thank you, four-member board.
It's now.
And now we've corrected the language in here to match the practice that we were.
Right.
We were.
Right. We've always been a five.
Okay.
And may I just say one more thing? I'm totally for this, but I would like to see on page twenty-four of twenty-six at the bottom that the revision date. So we reviewed it and changed that April third, two thousand twenty-five, just so it.
It will, that will reflect in the next minutes of the meeting, yes. It will, that will reflect in the next minutes of the meeting, yes. So there is going to be, my understanding, we need three motions. The first one is to accept the conflict of interest policy, which would be page six through eleven, thank you, six through eleven. A motion is in order to do so.
I'll make a motion for the Rutland County Solid Waste District to adopt the conflicts of interest and ethical conduct policy as presented in the packet.
Okay.
Second in.
Second. Any other debate? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Uh, the next motion would be to accept the rules of procedures of meetings, and that would be page, um, twelve through twenty-two. With the changes in there.
I'll make the motion to accept it.
Sorry. Any debate I have, uh, in order to talk, talk about here, on page fifteen of twenty-six, you'll see that the, underneath the agenda, under thirteen, the agenda items shall include a minimum of the following, and starting time and ending times, and as you can see, old business and new business is in there, so you are adopting that today. Okay, that's why we didn't do it in the, in the, um, agenda today, because we haven't actually adopted this yet. All right?
Make one other quick point here.
That's, go ahead.
On the, um, beginning, you're supposed to provide additional agenda items, must be provided seventy-two hours in advance of a regular meeting, and, and they have to be posted, so trying to close that agenda in the meeting is not, not appropriate. Just thought I'd point that out.
And Bill, may I comment on something else? I remember we already did this rules of procedures for meetings. And I thought we had already adopted this, but now we were making changes. Didn't we just adopt this a, a few months ago? We did.
Yeah, but we need to add some other changes.
Old business was on that when we adopted it before. What we're changing as of tonight is changing what we had already adopted. So the old business was already on there. Because I, I didn't bring that copy with me, because I felt like I had one here, but I would have brought that with me to show you how we had already adopted this, it's just that we're changing some of the wording.
Yes, so we're adopting the whole thing.
Was already on there, so we should be able to have old business on tonight's agenda. Because it was already adopted previously.
Okay. A motion to accept those, we already did that?
No, we didn't accept, we just?
Uh, well?
Yes, we did, we're in discussion, that's it.
I have another discussion, sir.
Yep.
With my name.
Yep.
Okay, page twenty-two of twenty-six.
Uh, we're not on that section, oh, okay, twenty-two.
We are.
All right.
It's on the last page.
Yep.
Departing member recognition. If they have served, if a member has served for at least five full terms, and they leave, they get a plaque. So we gave one to Tim, and we gave one to Larry when they left. So we gave it to the two men, and we had Carrie and Susanna, who both served for more than five full terms. And we have never given them a plaque or talked about it. I did bring it up to you a couple of months ago, you said, "Yeah, we're working on it." So I'm wondering how far?
That's before my time.
You spoke to me about?
I know, but that's before my time, that was something the previous president should have done.
What do you mean the previous president?
Chairman.
Previous chairman should have done.
So when we gave the two pla-
They left under his term.
I'm sorry, let me speak, I, I just want to finish what I'm saying, please. So when Larry and Tim left, and you gave them the plaques?
Because it was on my term.
On June fifth, two thousand five, Carrie left the month after that, she? Yeah, her last month was June, you were the chair.
She wasn't there.
She ain't been here in a long time.
She wasn't at that meeting because she was at a softball game with her niece, but she was still on the board.
It was just a single motion.
And Susanna was on, so, so I'm just wondering, so because you weren't chairperson, that means that this is totally excluded from that? That we don't respect those two women that were on for more than five years? We can't give them a plaque?
I, I have, I'm neutral on that, I have no opinion on one way or the other.
Well, why don't we do it?
Because it was not on my watch.
So, is, this is, this is what we are adopting.
Yeah, we already adopted this.
This is what was adopted on the date that's shown there.
Yeah.
So it would seem as if, per what this is, so, I guess, would say that anyone who's over five years?
Yeah.
Should get a plaque.
Yeah.
And it seems to be that you are implying, you're, you are bringing to the attention that there were two members who served more than five years?
Yeah.
Who did not receive a plaque.
Yes.
So, now, we should explore that.
So we should give them a plaque.
Yeah.
One, 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 we should confirm that they were for more than five years.
Okay.
I'm not, I just don't have that data.
No, I know.
It could be a real thing, it may not be, who knows? And if we find that they were, served for more than five years, they should be granted a plaque. That, that?
Thank you.
That's, that's what you're saying?
Yes.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Makes no difference who's got what.
Yeah, it, so, so the, the point, the point I'm making?
Downstream.
The point I'm making here is that, for the, for the sake of this particular discussion, and I'm, I'm not diminishing the value of it in any other way. I think this is appropriate, and it sounds like you also feel that this is appropriate, and that a, a secondary, a follow-up comment that should happen is that these people should be, um, prop, that this should be put into action on those people that you feel are missed.
Thank you very much.
Excellent. So I, I also agree that this is an appropriate statement, and I would like to support this statement. And I have no amendment to that statement.
Mr. Chairman, just a little history and timing of this policy, and when the events occurred. Um, when the two gentlemen retired. Um, it was a motion of the board to have a plaque for them. Um, and it, what happened in between that, and the time when this policy was adopted in September, this policy wasn't adopted until after the fact. It's not the sliding one.
Right.
It was at, at the moment of the time for the two gentlemen, so.
So we just go ahead?
Does it really matter, though? It should be out of respect, for somebody to be on this board for five years to?
So I think?
Yeah, you've been on a long time, that's a long time.
Point of order, we all agree.
Yeah, so just go ahead and say it's done.
Just make a motion.
I'll make a motion to go ahead and make the two plaques.
Is, is now the time to do that, because we have a, we have a motion? Can't do that right now.
Right, right.
I think everyone agrees with the board members.
Right, we agree with that.
Support of this motion, or this statement, but?
Right.
There will be, we, we all need to follow up on that.
Yeah, perfect.
Nice little thank you gesture.
Absolutely.
Okay, all in favor of adopting the, um, rules and procedures for the meeting?
Um, no, I got, I gotta think, I want, I want?
Discussion?
Yeah, discussion, I, I wanted to make a motion to add, again, the Board of Supervisors can have a line item on there, the comments, questions, and concerns.
Yes, 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 yes.
So that would be under reference, the spot on?
Number thirteen on page fifteen of twenty-six.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Part of those, whatever letter you want to put next to it.
Let me see, we have aye, during this.
It would be H, under, either before or after public comment, maybe?
Yes.
The agenda item shall be included at minimum, the following with predicted start.
Ten times.
So are, are these, I'm sorry, were you finished, Bob? I don't mean to speak over you.
No, I'm gonna let you finish, no, I'll correct you.
Thank you. Um, is, is there, in our charter, a list? How many of these are required, and how many of these are our?
Were adopted these?
So, but some of these must be required, and some of these must be per our?
Our rules.
Our rules, we can choose what we want, or whatever, so are there some of these that are required?
This is a template from the VLCT.
And is this the, this is the temp, this is that template?
Template from the VLCT.
Could I ask a point of clarification?
Sure.
Is there any reason that we couldn't bring up board member concerns under new business as an agenda item? I thought that was the point of that.
Members concerned, no.
Yeah, you could call it A, you could call it A under, you know, under the new business.
Oh, what you're saying, Ethan, is that what Bob is referring to would, would, would count as new business?
That's my understanding, that's why I was asking for clarification, confirm that's?
Even though that's not necessarily true.
No, that's why I asked for clarification.
Yeah.
So.
It would be nice for a board member to be able to freely ask a question.
That's, that's correct, but you got, up there, it says you have a minimum start and ending time, so we got to do it within the timeframe, so we can't be here for four hours, or else we're not going to have any board members at all.
I, I think Ethan makes an excellent point, as does Bob.
I think we should put it there.
Is, 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 we as a board, do we consider what he has mentioned as new business? Or do we as a board decide to choose to add a specific line item to identify it specifically? Is that kind of?
Totally, whatever the board wants to?
Thinking that, I don't want to speak for Bob, but I think Bob's just looking for, as they do in Castleton, is at the end of the meeting before, after public comments, the board gets to talk about some, maybe some of the things that they discussed during the night, or something that they saw, um, a truck riding down the road the wrong way, or something like that.
That's right, that's right.
So it's a comment, something that's less than two minutes.
Our meeting, our meetings, it's, that's new business.
So it wouldn't necessarily be to make motions, or things, it would be to share information, or make statements?
Board members.
My concerns.
Right after public?
It's a pine tree laying across such a tough street, and it's been there for two weeks, I bring it to the board's attention.
And it wouldn't be something that you were trying to have action done on?
No, do you send that out to?
So that, that would not be new business.
Downtown manager takes care of it.
This would be right after public comment.
Yeah, I guess they just add it right after.
The whole meeting?
Board members concerned with that public comment.
Concerns, questions, whatever.
Because there's no act.
Should be after the public, so the public has to?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
What's it called?
Members concerned.
Members concerned.
Or should we call it member comments?
It's comments, questions, and concerns on our, our agenda in Castleton. Because it could be one of the three.
Yeah.
Okay.
But is it a phase that would requ, that would garner response, or is it just a statement? I, I, I'm trying, I'm being the devil's advocate here, I don't, I don't?
Concerns.
Respond to it, yeah.
Comments.
You could say, "Oh, I seen that too."
So we can do that to CCCQ meeting. CCCQ.
I'd just like to see that.
Anything else? If not, all in favor of adopting the rules?
As?
As amended?
So now would Chad have to redo his, his motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to? You could withdraw your previous motion. Yeah, okay, I'll withdraw the previous and go ahead and adopt with the amendments. Second.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, all in favor say aye.
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 All the hands are up on the screen, too. All right, the last item is the, um, executive board policy. On, um, page twenty-two, twenty-three of twenty-six, under three, under policy, under A, if you change that to three.
What, what numbers are you at?
On page twenty-three, look at the top of your page, twenty-three of twenty-six.
Twenty-three of twenty-six.
Okay, number three, policy.
Number three.
Under A.
Yep.
And you go down five items, it says three in parentheses.
This one we already discussed.
This one we discussed.
Yeah, but we got to vote on this.
So we need a motion.
To vote on this.
Yep.
That's the only change here so far.
I'll make a motion to adopt the amended executive board policy as presented.
Here's a second.
Second.
Any more debate? If not, all in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Monthly financials.
The separate handout, if we provided, you got here, um, first page is the balance sheet for the general fund. Uh, showing total assets, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars and five cents.
You get one.
Everybody get one? Wait, I'm sorry.
Everybody got one?
Everybody got one?
Next page, uh, total liabilities of two thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. And total capital of nine hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-three dollars and seventy-eight cents.
I'm sorry, I got disoriented.
Yeah.
Would you mind starting over, I'm so sorry?
So the balance, the first sheet is the balance sheet for the general fund. Um, showing total assets of nine hundred thirty thousand, two hundred sixty-five dollars and five cents. Next page has total liabilities of two thousand eight hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents. Total capital of nine hundred twenty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. Next page, uh, we have the income statement for the general fund. Total current revenues as of January thirty-first are a hundred fifty-eight thousand, ninety-two dollars and twelve cents. It's down about sixteen thousand from last, last year, at the same time. Next page has total expenses of a hundred fifty-three thousand, one hundred sixty dollars and one cent. That's also down from prior year by about fourteen thousand. Giving us excess revenue over expenditures of four thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and eleven, eleven cents. Next page is the balance sheet for the month. Showing total assets of one million, three hundred five thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Zero liabilities, and capital of one million, three hundred five thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and eighty-one cents. And the final page is the income statement for the month. All written in line with last year basically, the revenues of five thousand, one hundred six dollars and ninety-five cents. Total expenses of five thousand, one hundred ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. Giving us net expense over income of ninety dollars and ninety cents.
Okay, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
So, Greg, this is only from January first to January thirty-first, correct? Okay, so, uh, page one, two, three. Revenues. Where does it say, like, for the money that we take in at the scale? At the transfer station?
So it's a?
Where is that?
It's, uh, broke up into a few different line items.
Okay.
Transfer station fees. Um, that's the scale, basically. Transfer station scale fees and transfer station fees are both basically the stuff that goes to the pad.
So this, the, the transfer station scale fees and the station fees?
Yeah.
So?
And then also, uh, down lower, the tipping surcharges.
Surcharge.
That's, uh, Casella and other haulers, that's the surcharge from?
Okay.
From haulers, Walter.
So we get, we, Rutland County Solid Waste, that's the money that we receive, all three of those?
Yeah, I mean, every line item on, on this top section.
Yeah, the whole top section is?
Yeah, those are the major ones from the transfer station. But, I mean, most of these line items do come from different items at the transfer station.
Okay. Because when our numbers are down, like like January, February, March, at the transfer station. Are we paying, are we paying attention to that, to figure out, like, if, if we're down like sixty thousand dollars in three months, compared to what last year we took in for revenue? Is that, is that a bad thing?
This is only for one month.
So.
I know.
Am I, because?
But this is April.
So.
I understand this.
I wanna, I, I don't understand quite what you're saying about revenues are down. Can you clarify what you mean by revenues are down?
Yes.
Down compared to, yeah, elaborate on that.
Okay.
I don't understand.
The, the, the money that comes in over the scale at the transfer station, all of that money is revenue, I presume, for Rutland County Solid Waste. And it's recorded. And so, if you compare that revenue from this year at the scale to last year's January at the scale, and if it's a sixteen thousand dollar or twenty thousand dollar difference.
Okay, I'm with you, so, yeah, yeah. So when you're using, when you're saying.
Is that screwing up our budget?
When you're saying the term are down, you're referring to the fact that.
Compared to last year.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Compared to last year, so if we're down sixteen to twenty thousand.
If compared to last year.
Compared to last year.
We have only, we, we haven't brought in as much revenue currently as we did last year.
Right.
So, okay.
So is that really gonna screw up our budget?
Well, I, I think where you look on the, on the next page, where we have expenditures, the, the revenue is, is, is linked to our expenditures. So the more we, we make up, we have, you know, point-to-point differences, so if, if, if we bring in more, it costs, we, we spend more, but if we bring in less, we spend less. So, if, if you look at last year's, and, and this is me clarifying, so I understand. So like last year.
So I'm looking at the following page?
The following page, we, we spent one hundred and fifty-three thousand this, at this January, and last January, we spent one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. But we're still making money. Just last year, we made more money over expenditures than we did this year, because that ratio is closing.
Okay, so here's the.
Did that, did I answer your question, by Ethan?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, I, I was just trying to clarify your question.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying. Well, another question is, should we care if our scale numbers are going down?
Should we care, or should we be aware?
Both. Should we be aware and should we care if it goes down
I think the answer is.
By thousands of dollars.
I think the answer would be yes.
Okay.
But I don't think it affects our functionality, right?
As long as there's a related reduction in the expenses, then it's not as concerning. They, they need to be tied together. If we have a reduction in revenue, we should also have a, a corresponding reduction in expenses.
Right. Still, from year to year, it's gotta be different. I mean.
Oh, yeah.
This year, you might have a whole bunch of stuff.
And also weather could have played a role in this.
So it's.
And COVID played a.
Tough one to try to guess, you know.
To get a good measurement? We need a quarter, we need a quarter, to see a good measurement.
Well, and I think that's, I think that's why we, we watch these every month, and we talk about these, so we can all be aware that we are lower than last year, so we can be aware of it. And then at a certain point, we can become concerned. If it, if that gap that Greg is referring to closes and eventually goes negative, that's where we need to be concerned. But at the moment, we're not at the point of concern because we're forty-nine hundred in the.
I'm, I'm cautious, cause that's a little low.
Yeah.
I'd be concerned before getting remembered.
Yes.
Yep.
No, so we're in the awareness.
I think we're in agreement with that.
Yeah. I don't wanna throw Greg under.
Nancy's got a question.
I got a question, too.
I, we, I just happened, she gets missed.
I think one of the faults for the district could be to reduce the solid waste we're throwing away. And, um, I believe that is. That causes us to lose money, but that also is desirable, to be, do more recycling, more composting, and more reusing of items, so, um, Scott, I thought that more trash isn't necessarily a good thing, even if it means we have more revenue.
Well, more, more stuff happening, and I think that is part of the mandate, that we deal with a great deal, and is part of this mix of numbers.
Going in the landfill.
Is that we see, we have to raise revenue, increase the revenue points off of certain things, to subsidize the things that we're trying to support, such as the recycling and the, the paint base, and whatever else we're, whatever our mandate is pushing us towards. So that's also why we watch this, so that Mr. Manager can stay on top and, and raise those trash tipping fees as this number goes off, because that's actually what we do, is either trash goes down, whether it's by recycling, or by whatever, that's the, that's the result of our concern.
Also.
And.
Go ahead.
Billy.
Rob.
I'm looking, I'm sorry.
Rob, do you wanna say something?
Yeah, I just got a question. I'm a little concerned, and this is not to throw you under the bus by any means, Greg. That we only have January numbers. When can we expect at least February numbers?
Going forward, we'll be basically back where we're one month behind, so typically, at the April meeting, we would have February's numbers instead of January's. Where the biggest hangup this month was getting the payroll basically integrated into our accounting system, because we've got the payroll processor doing our payrolls since January first. So we're working on basically a bulk upload file that we'll get from them every week. They process our payroll, send us the Excel file or dot CSV file, and we just enter that in the accounting system, it uploads all the accounting entries for payroll in one shot. We don't have that done yet, so I've been having to do it manually, after all that payroll data manually, so I got for January, haven't got for February yet, but that's the only thing that's not in there from February right now, is the payroll stuff.
So at the next meeting, could we expect February and March?
By next meeting, we should have March, yeah.
February and March.
We cut off March as well.
That's all my concern.
And then I think, I think the payroll will be.
We should be automated by then.
Automated, automated by then.
We should have that bulk upload.
We're in the middle of two systems, we're trying to convert.
So it's fair to say that we are behind right now, but there's, there's a plan in place to get caught up.
Are we also working on our audit?
Oh, yes, we are.
So that's something you're doing also.
Oh, yeah, that's an additional program.
Are you the only one working on that?
Um, I mean, they, I'm their go-to for, you know, whatever they need for documentation or questions generally, but, you know, Mark has a hand in that as well, so. But in terms of gathering, what, whatever they need for the audit, that's, that's on me.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So I noticed the biggest change in the expenditures is MSW disposal, is that municipal solid waste?
Trash.
Trash.
Yeah.
And it's a pretty significant change.
What sheet, please?
Uh, sorry, that is, actually, it's the.
You're under revenue?
Yeah, uh, expenditures.
Expenditures.
They're, they're on page numbers, unfortunately.
Yeah, we will.
What's the, what's the numbers of the, is it the?
I'm right here.
Am I on the right? Okay.
It's, notice, there's relatively minor.
So is that the scale? Is that mostly from the scale, that MSW disposal, the trash that comes over?
That's Cassella fees that we pay uh, for the disposal of the MSW.
That's the trucks leaving the site.
Right.
You mean, um.
That's the, we pay.
You mean MBI? When they leave with that truck loaded from the tipping pad?
I'm not sure who, who's physically doing it, but we get billed by Cassella.
Okay, cause we don't have a contract with them, so we just pay them, I don't even know what we pay them, cause we don't have a contract, so do we even know what we're paying per disposal?
Well, there's a number there, so we must know.
Oh, so that's for the month?
Yeah.
That's just for January.
So just for January, we paid thirty-eight thousand, four hundred and twenty dollars to have the trash removed and brought up to Coventry?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah.
But we brought.
We don't know where they're bringing it.
What, but we brought in forty-five plus eight plus one plus two on the previous page. For that, for the stuff that went into that truck that left.
Okay.
That's those, that's the collection of all of those fees is, I, I'm gonna say that's fifty-five thousand on an app, very, very ugly numbers. And then the, the thirty-eight is what we paid to get rid of what we brought in.
To be shipped to the landfill.
What we brought in fifty-five on. Is that, is that a fair, that's, that's kind of what the connection is?
Yeah.
But you're, you're missing Ethan's question.
Okay.
He's concerned that it's down twenty-seven thousand dollars from last January expenditure.
It's an expenditure, that's a good thing.
Yeah, there's a reason for that. I, I think that's what he's asking, why, why is it down?
If the revenue, if, if the expenditure is down, does that mean the revenue is down?
No, I mean, I think if, from what I'm reading, it's if transfer station fees are down, people are bringing in less trash, so we're paying less money to ship out garbage, so they're interrelated. We have less revenue for less expenditures as a result. Okay, what was the difference on revenues? I guess it's hard to say, we have to add.
Yeah, you got it on.
But anyway, yeah, I think my question has been answered, thank you.
Okay.
I would like to.
Yes.
So, um, the Coventry landfill is the only landfill that Vermont has, and that is scheduled to close in two thousand twenty-seven, which is in two years. So, um, being that we're in the trash business, I think we should be wondering what's gonna happen to the trash, because we're signing, we're supposedly signing contracts that are more than two years old, long. And, I mean, I don't know how you can figure things out for like a ten-year contract when that happens. The other thing is, um, because that Coventry landfill is, is closing, and they had some problems with it recently, a lot of trash hasn't been coming to us, it's been going over to Hudson Falls. So, even though Nancy says it's nice to have a reduction in trash, cause me, that might mean that they're reducing their.
That's not Nancy, that's, that's, that's our state.
She just said on TV.
That's our state mandate, she was, she was reciting our, our mandate, it, it.
Okay.
I don't mean to speak for you, Nancy, but that, she was reciting what our mandate was.
I agree with Nancy.
I'm, I'm just mentioning that because it, it felt like you were directing a, a comment towards her, which I felt was not appropriately directed at her.
Okay, well, I agree with Nancy. At, at, at another meeting, she had also had commented on that. So I would just like to say that I do believe that we have a reduction in rent, in revenue, because they're bringing it elsewhere. So I feel like we should be talking about how to bring more to us, how to be more customer-friendly.
Um, I think that landfill is supposed to reach capacity in twenty years, but I hadn't heard that it's closing in a few years.
It was on Vermont Public Radio, they announced it.
Because it's, it says it's not currently closing, so, um, maybe you wanna confirm that.
Sure.
Apparently, that's, that is also a state issue, also.
It is a state issue.
And whether they're allowed to close or not?
Well, no, the state has to process that, what they're gonna do, then they gotta come up with another alternative where all this stuff is going from the whole state.
So that will be dictated to us?
Exactly.
Okay. But in.
Mr. Potter.
Is that an appropriate question for Mr. Cassella, as to what's the plan for the future? That's his, his site that's closing.
And that's under the state jurisdiction, too.
Yeah.
It will be.
But I mean, it would be fair to ask that question to, because it's important to us.
Sure. We need to know where we're bringing this stuff.
But we would ask that question to our legislative representative, our.
What the policy is, what, what is the procedure with the legislature, how we're closing this thing down?
Mr. Cassella would be interested in that already.
Well, Cassella owns the Coventry landfill.
Which is underneath the agency of, uh, natural resources.
His business depends on having a place to get rid of trash, so he's concerned about.
Well, I think he's got other places. If I looked at his map.
He does have other places in New York.
He's got, well, no, he's got forty-eight other places, plus he has five trash-burning plants.
Are we allowed to bring Vermont trash out of?
It's up to him.
That's what was on Vermont Public Radio, is the other states were saying, why do we have so many landfills, and Vermont only has one?
Actually, some of our.
Why do we have to take?
Some of our members are sending it over to Glens Falls, am I correct?
Hudson Falls, Hudson Falls.
As, as a point of order, valuable conversation, but.
Not.
Budget.
Budget.
Is it, was that a polite way to put it?
Very good.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we gotta get you up here, we're over, over time.
So we need to, um, accept the report, correct?
I move to accept the report as presented.
Okay.
Oh, so that can be. Do we need to accept this? Have we done that in the past?
I don't know.
I thought we just get the presentation for.
It should be added to the minutes, for sure.
Okay. So I guess we don't, I, I.
I would think we should, yeah.
I reinstate my motion.
Okay.
All right, second just moved.
Yeah, I was just trying to keep things moving.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Managers' report.
I'm, I'm gonna be quick. This month, we hope to have, by the end of this month, three staff taking a forty-hour Hazwell class. Actually, two for the forty, and one for the thirty-six, which would allow them to assist up in the household hazardous waste. It's, these, these classes don't usually run every year, and we're just fortunate enough to have it happen within the last few months. Second item, at the end of the, at the, probably by next Monday or so, we're gonna have a annual report booklet that talks about all the things that we've done in two thousand twenty-four. It talks about covered events, talks about statistical numbers, things that have happened with the state, fact sheets on how you can better recycle, talks about a price list, it talks about, um, legislative initiatives and so forth. It's a good sized booklet that we publish, just to document what we do each year, and this will also be up on the website, but if you want a hardcover book, let me know. I can make one available to you.
Do we send these to the town clerks?
We, we could.
Yep.
We usually, I usually send them to them.
I think you, yeah, you send the link, yeah, cause they don't want any more paper.
No, so they'll have it on file if they want it. Um, another, another item thing that's happening with the legislation right now is that deals with household hazardous waste. Right now, um, paint care, which has been a program where it's almost like a bottle bill, you pay a little extra fee and just pays, reimburses the district, some money, but not the whole thing. Paint care is trying not to become part of this uh, EPR bill, which asks that the producers pay the full value from cradle to blend. So, paint care is blocking on that, they're gonna give us a little bit more money, but we're looking to cover our costs, like staffing, utilities, all the things that cost. In, in the HHW EPR bill, that will take place. So that's discussions that are happening later this week and next week. The other thing is, as always, um, the bottle bill is being discussed. We're gonna do the bottle bills, this is gonna be a hybrid bill, so you can do the collections, but also have a better way of uh, making the program more accessible for us to get the material back, so we can make some monies to recycle it.
So the, the bill crossover yet, to one body to the other?
They're about to do that. I think if they didn't do it today, it would be tomorrow.
Cause they have to do it this week.
Yeah.
If it doesn't, the bill stays on the wall.
Right now, there's, there's numbers out there saying the bottle bills, and I say bottle bills loosely, because a whole other conversation talks about what should be included, glass wine, soda, sports, sports bottles, and you know, the more we can recycle, we're at seventy-one percent, and there's like a goal in this new legislation to have it up as high as ninety. I think if we were to get, um, the state, and I was talking, if we can get to eighty-five, I think that's gonna be much, that's gonna be good by a certain time. So they're doing weights and measures, it is, is all, many statutes have. So stay tuned, reach out to your legislative people. When it passes over to the Senate. Usually.
Quick point of order, sorry, is your computer plugged in? It looks like the battery's about to die.
I did, I did, I just plugged it, yeah.
Okay.
And it almost came in.
Just make sure. Excellent situation for awareness.
Thank you, thank you. Real quick.
Young eyes.
Yeah, real quick, so stay tuned, I, I know in previous years around this time, I, we have like a, I have like a comment, this is the pros and the cons of this. Reach out to your legislative senator or something like that, and they also give him a copy to encourage us to happen. Right now, the, uh, we're encouraging the, the paint care go into HHW, so we can get the full value of it. And for the bottle bill, um, we just wanted to recycle, and that's, that's still ongoing, and for the last time I've been here, it's been talked about. Um, other things, there's a training that's coming up, if you check on vrct.org, there's trainings that occur, and there's one that, um, if you're new to this, or you just wanna refresh your skills, on, um, April fourteenth, I believe, there's gonna be an open meeting law for boards and committees, and you can register on there, it's pretty easy. There's other things related to risk management guidance, and, and a whole bunch of other things. I was, um, on, on a, a recent training for.
Unless, unless Bob leaves.
No, I'm not with.
Yeah. Okay, we're up. Sorry about that, guys, ladies, gentlemen.
I gotta get back in, I'm gonna get hollered at.
John, don't be harassing him too.
We need him for another few minutes.
So we don't have a form?
You do.
Oh, we do. You do. If he comes back up, they're back on.
I think Mark has it back on his computer. We need to get it back recording.
They're, they're on. They just gotta put the TV on it. Hold on. I see you.
Oh, they're on here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. We get everybody back?
Right there.
Oh, there we are. Okay. Sorry about that, guys. We, we got unplugged.
And are we recording?
Yep.
Yep.
Yep. Okay. Thank you, Mark.
Sorry. Was that the end of your report?
That's the end of my.
Thank you for trying.
We were, we were not discussing anything while we were off. Just so the members who are on the TV. We didn't do anything.
So we've completed the manager's report and I believe we have a member with a question?
Yes.
I would like to get an update.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. You didn't see my hand?
Sorry.
Oh, Mr. Potter.
Mr. Potter had started speaking and he was facing this way. So you may not have seen.
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to query the board here a little bit about how things are going in the town, uh, because our town has, uh, reached a point where it's costing more for recyclables, uh, items than it is for trash. And, and the select board reacted to that by changing the hours. They, they cut back on the hours that, uh, the, the transfer station is open to save a little money. And they're also charging now for recyclables, uh, in order to get some income to try to balance things out. And I was just wondering, is our town unique in this problem?
I think Castleton has an issue too.
So do you have any different approach to solving that?
Not yet. I'd be very interested in how your charges are recycled. We could talk about that.
Sure, sure. Absolutely. Yes.
I would like to get an update on the scale house because aren't we supposed to be doing a new scale house? We saw pictures of all these different scale houses. We never talked about, you know, what were they gonna use?
That's a good question.
I mean, are we putting anything out to?
I would love to do that, but it wasn't warned. Under the managers' report?
Under the managers' report. I'd like to get an update from him what's going on.
So she's asking for?
An update for the next meeting. I can do that. We'll put it on the agenda under the managers' report.
He's not prepared to answer that question.
I can, you can call me and I'll, I'll talk about some.
I want it spoken at a meeting.
There's a geology mark and restors don't hear it.
Okay.
We all want to hear it.
Okay.
So at the next, so we're asking.
I want an update on it. I want to know about the house, the electric, the excavating, the water, the sewer, the paving, because you said we're on the Rutland City paving schedule and I'm hoping we're not gonna.
No, 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 no. Not paving. We're in, we're in the contract. We can, we are now under the contract with the city. So he can buy it when he needs it.
Oh, okay.
They're getting the same price.
Okay, okay.
They're in, they're in a buying.
They're in a co-op.
Co-op, correct.
Okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood.
So our schools, the city, the library. I think somebody else is in that. There's a bunch of us in that one.
We'd like to be.
Okay. But yeah, I would like to get an update because I would like to see as much as possible getting done so that we don't have to.
I will add that to the managers' report for you. Okay?
Thank you very much.
Who is our current compliance officer?
We don't have one. For Holland?
Yeah, that's basically, yeah.
Yeah, we don't have one. We don't have one. We're doing it in, we're gonna probably end up doing it in-house.
How long have we not had one?
Well, it's, it's, um, been out of touch for since Ju- July last year, July.
July 2024?
Yeah.
You're gonna do it in-house, Mark?
We're gonna, we're looking at it.
Okay. So then my next question is a mute question. I was gonna ask you why we don't get regular reports. We don't get regular reports because we don't have nothing to report.
Right. See what I, my question was, why don't we get regular reports from the compliance officer? We don't get them because we don't have one. Yeah.
So that's my second, my second question is, no, it's, it's for the.
So since this is the manager's report discussion. Is your question going to be, do you want him to follow up?
Follow up for the next meeting.
Something or did that answer? I think either is fine. I just wanna, I wanna make sure that we keep the conversation to the manager's report. So just form your quest, your comments. So they're related to that.
All I asked was who are compliance officers? You said we haven't had one.
Is that the shared one we're dealing with?
That was the, with the other districts, the managers' association. Yeah.
She left, whoever it is.
It was, yeah, it was a female the last time I asked.
Yes.
Bye-bye.
She, she, yeah.
No follow-up.
Well, Mark needs to follow up on that.
But no follow-up, no, no report, even next.
Yeah, we, I did. I put it on for a report.
You did. Okay.
Just update us in what you guys are gonna do.
Even if it's not, even if there is no update, at least it's on there.
At least they'll tell us there's no update.
There it's on there. That's all.
Okay. I know what you mean now.
Yeah.
Okay.
If not, motion to adjourn.
No.
No.
No, point of order. Uh, number eight, please, Mr.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Do we have anybody in the public?
Who do?
Yes.
And who do we have on the floor?
And your name?
John Chazek. Proctor. I'm on the land, all, all, all you people anyways. I'm just saying, I'd like to see you people go to other transfer stations and look at their operations. All right? It's a big difference between Rutland County and the other ones. And I think you should take the time and do it because I'll tell you something right now, there'll be no Rutland County waste if you don't do something. I'm telling you, I was on the board for a lot of years here and things have changed up there. I don't blame the workers. I blame you people. You represent the towns. And if this contaminated soil has an issue, who's gonna pay for it? Rutland City ain't gonna step up to the plate. It's gonna be each town's gonna have to step up to the plate. And I have property in all these towns. And who's gonna pay? The taxpayer. And that's why I'm concerned with what's going on. Clinton County, you go to theirs, couldn't ask, you could eat it off the floor. You go to another transfer station, you're gonna go to the burn plant. What am I missing here? I'm in the construction business for over 50 years and you do not feed your competitor and you're feeding them very good, which is Mr. Hubbard. Cause I was up there one day and I was amazed, the number of people that used to go to Rutland County waste and now they're going to Hubbard's. And I'll tell you something right now, things are gonna get worse. The tonnage is down, way down. So I just thought you people should be prepared and help the taxpayers. Each town should step up to the plate. Thank you very much.
What town you with?
What's that?
What town you from?
Proctor. But I don't land in Chittenden, Mendon, Wallingford. But I'm just saying, I've seen it. And I think you should go to the transfer stations, Clinton County and all these other ones and look at it and see what goes on. You'd be amazed. Everybody's looking for one thing today, the money dollar. If they can save $2 to go to Hubbard's, they're gonna go to Hubbard's. And I've been on jobs for the state and stuff, and it's all this.
Okay.
So I just thought be prepared because I would like to know if this, if this company goes belly up. Who owns it? Who's gonna pay for it? Each Tony. You're gonna have to come up with the cash. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other members' concerns or public comments? If not, motion's ignored.
Chuck?
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Yes. Well, I got one more thing. Sorry, Chuck. Are we gonna talk about this executive session? That you guys said no at the last meeting? When are you gonna talk about this? You all voted no against it in the last meeting because you needed time to go over to the executive session. Have you had enough time to go over to the executive session?
Well, we've dealt with it over the years already once. I can't see bringing it back up again. We've already dealt with that and gave our answers the last time.
When did you deal with it and give your answers?
Four or five years ago, three, four years ago, whatever it was.
Trying to bring it up again.
Really? You had the same issues four or five years ago?
No. So those issues that you recall up that Carrie brought up, we've dealt with them, I don't know how many times.
Well, evidently it hasn't been resolved.
Well.
Well, did you read that letter that Carrie and Bill Gillum did together when they went around and interviewed each individual employee separately, privately? You see the answer that they got?
That's a big deal.
All I ask is if we're going to.
I know, but we can't talk about that in open session.
No, I didn't ask. I talked about, I asked if we're gonna go into executive session. So we can talk about this stuff.
And Chuck's trying to say that you guys talked about this.
We dealt with it a few years ago. Yes.
Four years ago.
A few years. I don't know exactly.
Anything about it.
So what, uh, what is the procedure for going into executive session?
You make a motion, you second.
Well, you don't close regularly, but you're going.
You have to close this.
Okay. So.
All the public has to leave.
Chat has, chat has to leave. So I, I don't want to cut this short, but we're gonna lose a quorum if Chat leaves.
I gotta, I can't. No, I don't think you still should have enough with, with, we go and I don't take that many votes.
Yeah, no, you're fine.
Thank you, Chat.
Yeah.
Appreciate you pushing through as long as you could.
Yeah.
Do you need a hand?
No, I'll make it. I'll make it fine. But thanks.
I'm so sorry. I just wanted to make sure Chuck would take care of it. So what is the procedure?
I just make a motion to go into executive session. I don't know.
For what reason?
Personnel.
You're not doing it correctly. You have to adjourn your present meeting.
That's correct.
Then make a motion to an executive session. Then when you come back from executive session, you have to reopen your meeting. Reopen your meeting.
So the, so procedural step right now, it sounds like.
I need the motion and I just need a second on it.
Okay. So the motion is to only have.
Board supervisors.
Supervisors. Everybody else leaves the building.
And then there's discussion?
No discussion.
No discussion.
You gotta have a motion. We have to have a state motion, whatever that state motion is.
For personnel.
For personnel. There's a whole statute that we're supposed to read.
What can be added in when you do the minutes, like you've done in the past?
I can get it for you.
So we have a discussion.
Well, no, we have to know anything. Yeah, we have to vote to go in if you want to go in.
Yeah. But are you gonna have discussion around the motion? Do you want to go into executive session?
No, because it's executive session. So no discussion.
They're both up or both down.
Mark has a, a specific rule that we, on the, we include it in the. In order to go into, it's supposed to be an official executive session motion. Did I understand that correctly? Well, it's just meant for executive session. Everybody to the room that wasn't on board. And then we discuss whatever the topic is. We always have the, the, the make the motion and then everyone approved it. Recording gets shut off my last. Nothing gets recorded.
But not yet.
Oh, I have another meeting?
No.
Uh-huh.
Make it short. I can tell you how to make it short.
It may be short, Doug.
So after making a specific finding, premature public knowledge, um, we are going into an executive session. It might put the district in a disadvantage. We're not doing contracts. We're not, what are we doing? Labor? Personnel. Personnel. Okay. So the motion's on the floor to go into executive session. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
How about on the TV? Yes or no? To go into executive session?
Nancy, do you want to go in executive session or not?
So let's, let's reclarify. So everybody knows there was, the motion was made by.
You're not seeing?
To go into executive session for personnel. And now we are voting yea or nay. Perhaps we should go with, I heard some of you. Perhaps, do we need to account for this? Or it's just a vote?
It's your call.
Is it count? Unless it's, is it unanimous?
It hasn't been determined yet. We're trying to sort out the communication.
I hear anybody this morning, or they can't hear us.
Can you hear us at home?
Yes, I can hear you just fine, but I can't see you. I raised my hand, but you didn't seem to see it. So I'm not.
Yeah, there's just confusion out there. I, I wanna, I'm concerned that we.
You have to adjourn the present meeting you're in to go into executive session for whatever purpose. And it's very limited as to what purposes you can go into executive session. Uh, labor or employees or whatever is a, a valid thing. And then once you get done in executive session, you reopen your meeting and do whatever you were doing. Advert, make a motion to adjourn or whatever your, whatever point you're at at the meeting.
At what point do we make the motion to go into executive session? Before or after we adjourn?
Once you close the meeting, you can't do anything.
Present meeting for the purpose of going into executive session to address a personnel issue or whatever you're going to address. And then you would go into executive session, say what you had to say, do what you had to do, and then you would end your executive session at such and such a time, and then reopen your meeting at such and such a time.
Make the motion out of adjourned and to enter into.
It's like you're having a meeting within a meeting is what you're doing, basically. In layman's terms, it's, you know, that's how it has to be on according to Robert's.
So it's here, you have to have two thirds of the affirmative vote to go in executive session.
And that's during our regular session is when that vote happens?
Mm-hmm.
And so we don't adjourn before we take that.
Don't you adjourn out of the regular meeting and then you go into?
No, we need to do that while you're in open session.
Yeah, I think we need to close out the motion in the regular meeting. And then if it's approved.
We never adjourn. Our board never adjourns. We just go, we just go into executive session.
Then you go into executive session.
Then we adjourn after we come back.
Payroll or personnel.
That's the one. We, we.
That's very executive session. Discuss whatever it is. And then you come out of executive session.
Okay. All right.
So we have the motion. We just need to do a roll.
Roll call on the motion. Okay.
How many in favor of going into executive session?
Correct.
David, Ian?
No.
Robert Spelving?
Yes.
David Potter?
No.
Tim Carter?
Yes.
Uh, Rick Gromasky?
Yes.
Uh, do we still have Jay Hickory?
No.
Jason, no? All right. Uh, Susan Feenick?
Yes.
Clint, Willie?
Oh, he was just here.
He was. No, no.
No, that was, um, okay. So we lost Clint. All right.
Do we have a call?
Yeah, we still, uh, Nancy Goodrow?
Yes.
It's a yes. Uh, Bill Gillum?
No.
Ethan Peppin?
Yes.
We lost Chat. So Don Bruce?
Yes.
Sorry if I'm getting your last name wrong.
No, you got it right.
Okay. Seven, yes. One, two, four, no. Let me do the, the tally.
Mm-hmm. Did you say it's two thirds? Is it counted on?
It means two thirds affirmative.
Oh, Jesus, I have a little. Sorry.
So we need 66%?
Yeah.
Yes. Anyone else?
That's the state statute.
You can't remember all this crap off the top of your head. I mean, all this valuable.
So it's 114, yes, to 98, no. Well, I'm sorry.
114, yes, 98, no.
Correct.
So.
Is that two thirds?
So what do we need to do for math to get?
So what'll be two thirds? Yes.
What's the total number of votes?
So 14. Elementary was a long time ago.
54%. So it's not two thirds.
So 54% was yes.
It's not two thirds.
It's not two thirds. So motion failed. So a motion to adjourn then?
In Chat's honor, I move.